This video is former two-term mayor of North Miami, Joe Celestine, discussing the upcoming election to name a new Miami-Dade County Commissioner for District 2. District 2 includes the cities of North Miami, North Miami Beach, Opa-locka, and the unincorporated area of Biscayne Gardens. Joe's message is to the voters of District 2 and to the other candidates running for the Commissioner position. My name is Nancy Hopkins, a resident of Biscayne Gardens and a member of the Biscayne Gardens Civic Association. Joe began the discussion with comments on how the candidates for County Commissioner for District 2 answered the question regarding their support for incorporating Biscayne Gardens into a city. Joe's answer was absolutely not until the infrastructure and flood control is created. I asked him to comment on the positions the others had taken, ranging from "I have to look into that" to "I will do what the voters want to do."
My view is people elected leaders to guide them and to lead them, not to tell them what they want to hear. Because if you're not educated in the subject matter, you want a leader that would lead you and educate you. And if he's not educated on the subject, he's responsible to get the best response or the best answer or what you need to do to know and educate you. And in this particular instance, I think these candidates clearly avoid the real issue by saying, "I am going to leave it to the voters." They didn't inquire, they didn't do their homework to find out, "There is a problem, how do I resolve it?" Or a group of people are for incorporation, another group are against incorporation. As the leader, is incorporation the answer or the best course of action for the district? When I answer that question on the affirmative, I said, "I'm going to take the position of a leader." That was the beginning of my statement. "I am going to take the position of a leader. The area is not ready for incorporation, and this is why." And I outlined the reasons that we all know of as to why I think it's a bad idea to incorporate the area now.
Let us assume you are Commissioner. District 2 includes more than Biscayne Gardens. What will you do for the rest of the district? What are your detailed plans?
The number one issue of that district, this is the poorest district out of the entire county. This is the district with more problems out of the entire county. Economics problem, infrastructure problems, job retaining or level of employment problem is the highest within that district. So because of that, we have a lot of social problem, a lot of economic problem. The solution to that, our government or the district commissioner, let's say as he relates to District 2, let's address the issue of Biscayne Gardens. The biggest problem is that the current Commissioner needed to know that Biscayne Gardens was not ready for incorporation for lack of infrastructures, for lack of flood control, or furthermore, for lack of commercial and industrial zone that does not exist in the district. Because you need to know that the commercial area and the industrial areas basically are the areas that produce the most return in terms of ad valorem taxes, tangible taxes. And that's what the city is living on. If you don't have these incomes, you just cannot organize a city because you won't have no money to pay for the area. The county has given the copy of the study to the incorporators, telling them that this area is running as a deficit. Even though the county has a large buying power and has the resources, the area still running at a deficit. Meaning that the tax collected by the county from this area is a lot less than the expenses that the county has to put in this area. So if your local government will be based on the tax increment to organize and take care of the city, you already have a model that telling you you do not have enough tax base to sustain your own. Notwithstanding the fact the area have major challenges. One of them is the flood. To do remediation of that flood problem, you may have to spend 50 or 100 millions dollars to do that. And once you incorporate, you assume all that liability. It's no longer the county. It now becomes your problem to resolve. So why would you want to do this? Incorporate an area that has all these infrastructure problems. You don't have sewer. Most of your homes are sitting on septic tanks. Your water table is very high. You are a flood zone area. And you have high water table. So water control would be a major problem. The only way to resolve that would be for you to create canals, water retention area, or water detention area. To do water retention and detention, you need a lot of land. Because you got to do a man-made lake and direct the water there and allow the water to stay there for a number of time until the water clearly percolates or goes away. Water is a closed circuit. It's going to migrate from here to anywhere within that circuit. So when you create flood in one area, the water is going to go find somewhere else to go within that same area that is available. So you got to resolve the problem. The other way to do it would be to create five wells, vertical wells, classified that inject the water directly into the aquifer below, which would be a very good thing for we use. So the water would not travel or stay above the water table. It would go below in the aquifer. Aquifer has capacities. And sometime with the county pumping water for water used at water plant, the volume the aquifer is diminishing. By we injecting water into the aquifer, you're making more water available for the water plant to use. So it's a great use. The aquifer is a bank of water, like a water tank, a natural tank of water that is below the ground. It may be at 40, 50, 60, 100 feet or 80 feet, depending on the area. And when your water plant is in need of water, they have a well system that is pumping water from the aquifer, treat it, and that's how you get your water to drink at home. The other way is reverse osmosis. It's a system where the water plant take water out of the ocean and take the salt out of it, treat it, and send it to you at home. The water that you use at home, that you wash in the kitchen, that you flush, goes back into the water table and slowly percolate into the aquifer. That is a very slow process. Because the water table, it's a water body that is above the aquifer. So the aquifer may be low in capacity. Having to inject the water directly in the aquifer, you kind of create a relief for the water table and allowing when rains come, your water can percolate better into the ground above the water table. And our position in Biscayne Gardens, the water table is at three feet. So you got three feet of dirt, rock, sand that you can spread your water over. You can't go further below. Because further below, you're directly in the water. Because that's the height of the water table. Since the water table is connected to what they call a tide system, it's an environmental element that comes in and go. So low tide, high tide will bring the water table higher. And low tide will bring the water above the water table would percolate into the water table. We have an issue, an environmental issue. It's called the rising of the tide. It's an environmental issue that is big because of the heating elements. Now tide water is coming from the ocean because Biscayne Gardens is three miles away from the Anacostal from the water. So tide now has migrated all the way to 57th Avenue Northwest. Meaning when high tides come in, it goes to 57th Avenue Northwest, west. So you have high tide in this area. The area has to have an infrastructure control of water. And the area also needs gravity sewer, not force men, gravity sewer installed by Miami-Dade County within the area. With gravity sewer, when you flush your bathroom, when you wash your clothes, when you use your kitchen sink, that water goes into the sewer line, which is a pipe that carry that water into a pump station and uplift it or send it somewhere else into a processing center so they can process it. If you are on septic tank, when you flush your toilet, all of that water goes above ground into your neighborhood and further aggravate your flooding issue. So an area on septic tank will have something called a drain field that's outside of your tank that take all your water and spread it underground in the area where you live. The more homes you have flushing, washing dishes, the more water you have percolating underground in the area where you live. So when you do, when you put sewer line in place, gravity sewer line, you would have less water. And the groundwater in your area will be less saturated and can handle flood much better.
Can you please explain why real estate development would be disastrous for Biscayne Gardens and likely the surrounding neighborhoods?
If you bought this building, it would be a disaster area. Because the reason Biscayne Gardens was designed with large lot is because of the issue of the makeup of the ecosystem. Biscayne Gardens has always been a high tide area or high water table area because of the proximity from the ocean. So because of that, the city east of us is North Miami. And North Miami and North Miami Beach, they both have water and sewer, gravity, and force men. They don't have the same problem we have in Biscayne Gardens. So once you leave North Miami and North Miami Beach, you go west. Then you fall directly with that situation where you have large lots of acre plus or an acre or half acre. An acre is 43,560 square feet. Most of the homes in the area are average 2,000 to 3,000 square feet. Imagine you have 40,000 square feet of ground for water to percolate. That helps a lot. But if you bring an apartment building, the lot coverage now would be 40,000 square feet instead of 3,000. The parking lot would cover, would also be impervious. So the lot coverage, the water has to go somewhere. And that water will go directly into your yard or into somebody's house. And this is the reason why, this is one of the reasons that we cannot have high-rise or apartment building in a residential area that has these challenges like Biscayne Gardens has. Well, the entire area here primarily has been, had been underwater before the redevelopment. So this is a very flat area that was part of the bay originally. Remember in Miami, or where we are now, we have no mountain. This is a flat area. And the area is proximity to the base three miles. Therefore, when the high tide come because of rising of the tide, water is coming this way. And this is the reason why the new rules of development to meet the flood plan, people have to build nine feet above the ground or eight feet above the ground because of the anticipation of what will happen in the near future in this area. So to bring these apartments in, it's a crime. It's just to ignore the people's problem and issues just trying to accommodate something that makes no sense. Only because developers wants to make money. They don't live in the area. They don't really care about the area. Once the building is completed, where the next door is flooding, whether you are underwater, it's your problem. Let the county and the federal government or your new local government find money to resolve the issues. And that would be more taxes and more taxes.
Just a few months ago, we won by 83% the election to prevent incorporation of Biscayne Gardens. This new move to incorporate came in September of 2020 during the health emergency. To keep it simple, the effort was pushed forward without any attempt to engage the voters. The only reason we won was because a few old timers saw a group of investors and developers calling themselves a Chamber of Commerce, working with a sitting Commissioner, doing everything they could to keep the voters ignorant. Those three old timers were joined by dozens of others who went to voters door to door to tell them what was happening. Last night, you said this vote on incorporation can still be put on the upcoming November election. Can you please expand on that?
First of all, there is a resolution at the county. It's called the Resolution 974-03. The 974-03 was enacted in September 9, 2003. It was specifically adapted for the Biscayne Garden MAC, which is main study for the incorporation, and also for annexation. Meaning that there were three cities that the county had approached about annexation of the Biscayne Garden area. One was Opa-locka. The other one was North Miami. And the other one, another one was North Miami Beach. Because we are bordered by these, an incorporated area with these three cities. Opa-locka didn't show much interest. But North Miami Beach in North Miami had showed interest. And this is the reason why North Miami has already taken a portion of Biscayne Gardens already without voters' approval. Because under the rules, if a local government has contiguous land to the area, they can apply the 250 homes rule. And they can annex 250 home without an election. So the people of Biscayne Gardens need to pay attention to that resolution. And also have a county Commissioner that can table that as he relates to Biscayne Gardens for the time being. And also, the resolution to incorporate needs to be tabled until the infrastructure of the area is taken care of. And that is a long term because there's a lot of money the county needs to put in the area to resolve the problem. Right now, there's no excuses. The county will receive money from the federal government, $1.2 billion that was allocated a week ago for flood. We just have to make sure we have a Commissioner that understand that, that is going to give priority to this area. No excuses. But you have to have someone who clearly understand. And that is the danger of electing someone who doesn't have a clue about municipal government, who are not educated in the process to lead you.
You were a two-term mayor of the city of North Miami. Please share with us what your leadership did for that city.
My experience there when I came in, I found the leadership of the city was using the most valuable land in the city on the east of Biscayne Boulevard. They were using it as a dump, as a landfill. And that's the issue. Where there are no vision, the people perish. I came in, I closed that dump. And today, that area is called Biscayne Landing or Olida or Solamia becomes and is an economic engine for the North Miami. We relocated Newcastle on site. This is a property overlooking at the Biscayne Bay, the Anacostal. We were able, we have a development there. We're building a hospital right in there from U M. Headquarters there. And we have currently three or six towers. Beautiful apartment building right next to FIU. And there will be a hotel soon there. We'll be developing the area. And that area is what keeping the city on the map right now. The city is surviving of that. During my tenure as mayor, I created a CRA to take the tax increment from the county to be able to spend money in that area to eliminate slum and blight. During my tenure also, I created a housing authority where we can get housing funds where we can make 2042 title loans to finance home to convert renters into property owners so we can give them some dignity and so we can give them a sense of belonging. I created the No Me System where I bought in money from federal government as a grant to create a circular bus system where people within North Miami can circulate at no charge. I bought in a lot of grants from the federal and state government to help the city. One of them is the Joe Celestine Center, which is in 135th Street, named after me. That center is financed by money that I bought into the city from, not coming from the city budget. We use that fund to build a center to allow the youth or the young people who are involved in gang to play basketball, football, soccer, get them involved into something, some kind of activity to prevent them from getting involved in bad activities. I can go on and on and on, but it takes a vision, education, and background. I have been a planner. I have a master's degree in architectural and engineering and a planning. So that helps me a lot of understand urban development. And I've been able to apply my education and my knowledge towards helping this community uplifting.
As a former mayor, what do you see the county Commissioner can do for all three cities? North Miami, North Miami Beach, and Opa-locka. What issues do they have that the Commissioner can help alleviate?
The number one issue that they currently have is economic problem. We have a very high level of unemployment within District 2. And that is a major problem. We also have a high level of unskilled residents that cannot get job anywhere because they don't have the skill or the education to compete. So because of that, you have a lot of unemployment. So in the commercial corridors and the industrial corridors, as your Commissioner, I will declare that area an enterprise zone where the county will give major corporations, businesses, free taxes, and incentive for you to come relocate yourself in the commercial corridor or in the industrial corridor in exchange to create employment for people that live in the area. And I would also set aside funding to educate people because not everybody was designed to have a master's degree or a college degree. But you can also be a useful individual into society by learning a trade. So I would build a lot of trade school to create electrician, journeyman, certified plumbers, surveyor technicians, nurses. We need a lot more nurses. There's a shortage of nurses. You only need a high school diploma to go to school and learn nurses. So, and they're making over $50 per hour. If you are not a handicap, you don't have a mental issue. There's no reason that you should be on welfare. Because when you are on welfare, you are automatically a person with depression and mental instability. Because I know that these people are very proud people. They have a lot of pride. So it's better to help them by telling them, "Instead of giving you handout, I want to help you succeed and I'm going to create a school for you to go, I'm going to finance for you to go to nursing school. I'm going to create a school for you to become an electrician, a journeyman, a contractor, a carpenter." a carpenter. Okay, a plumber, a surveyor technician. I can go on. Jobs, good paying jobs that are paying forty to fifty, sixty dollars per hour where someone can compete. By doing that, we will eliminate prostitution. We would give back the pride that these people have into themselves. We would create good family. People would get good job that comes with benefits. And some of them will retire in these jobs. And they'll have retirement to collect. As it is right now, these people are not living, they are surviving. And that has created a lot of crime. You've got a bunch of people who has nothing going for themselves. The biggest industry in the District Two right now are pawn shops and flea markets that it used to be. So what do you expect? It will always be a problem unless government step up and do certain things instead of giving people handout. But give them the power to get better paying jobs. Or give them, help them to gain or take back their integrity. I don't, I'm not, I don't enjoy seeing farm store here and people in line, breaks my heart to see a line of cars for five hours, people getting a small bag of raw food to go home with because of the necessity. I understand that if you're a handicap, if you have a mental health, health problem. But if you're strong, you're healthy, you're young, you need to get into something so you can compete. Because there's six million people that are coming down, that came down from the north, they're coming here with skills, knowledge to compete with you. So if you think things are bad now, they're only going to get worse. Because you now have competition with skilled people. Lot of tech companies are coming to Miami. And you need to be educated on the new system. And we gotta push people to acquire proper training and education to compete. By resolving the economic problem, we will take care of a lot of issues within District Two.
This seems rather obvious and fundamental to me. My confusion is why has your plan not already been put into place?
Let me tell you, let me turn you into a private secret. When I came into North Miami as mayor, I saw the west of 125th Street. I saw Seventh Avenue West in North Miami. Gang, gangs ravaging the area. The median on the road, the grass, the on the side of the road were all gone. The area looked like the day after, a neglected area. Homes were dilapidated, bad. So I asked my city manager for the city, I'm your new mayor, why this area look that way? And why the city is putting money and creating a landscaping and the median on certain area? Even putting water sprinkler system to make sure that the area has nice landscaping on both side of the road? And why this area look the way they are? The manager told me, in order for us to receive federal funding and the city from the federal government, we need to have slum and blight. Otherwise, we do not qualify for the funds. So
Are you kidding me?
Yes.
Oh man, that, that makes so much sense, I've understood that, but I mean it just like that is, oh wow, 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 wow. Okay.
If we were to eliminate blight and slum to the entire city, we would automatically be disqualified for the federal funding. It is unbelievable, unheard of that the government needs certain area to be certain way so they can get federal funding. Because enter the federal funding, they can use part of that money in the general funds to take care of all their obligations. So I still, I said, Mr. Manager, I'm sorry, under my government, we're not gonna, we're gonna work to get less federal funding. And we're gonna help these people and make the area look decent. We're going to eliminate the gang problem. Because your police department gets money based on the number of shooting you have in the area. But I would rather eliminate the shooting in the area than get funding to deal with it. So, I set up a gang system, a task force. And I begin to work in the area. And the Joe Celestine Center was part of that work to bring decency into the area. And today, the city gets a quarter of that money the city used to receive from the federal government for slum and blight. So, all of that, the people needs to know. I worked for Miami Dade HUD as their contractor. HUD would put a twenty-five hundred dollar window into a box in Liberty City. And I would install windows for seventy thousand dollars into a small square box. And the people would break that window and I will come back next year again and we install them again at seventy thousand dollars apiece. Because unless that area remain that way, the county HUD will not get the money. Sometime, the county will put hundred and forty thousand dollars whether repair into a property that's worth ninety. And they're going to do it over and over again. It's almost like an organized crime. So
Sounds like insanity.
Insanity, the right word. So people needs to really understand what government are doing. You need to get people with good sense to understand the wasteful spending of tax dollars in the hands of local, state and federal government. I left the city of North Miami with a large surplus in their bank account. Only five years later, the city was in the red. Almost went out of business, the city almost went bankrupt. Because of lack of vision, lack of leaders with vision, leaders that are educated enough that understand planning, that understand municipal and greed. Greed from leaders. Lot of corruption, lot of misuse of funds and, uh, and the taxpayers' dollars is the major issue that you currently have in. For example, the area, the issue about Biscayne Garden area incorporation. You got developers that know this is the only area with large lot. They're coming to incoming politician candidates and existing politicians. They want to pay up. So you can allow them to convert a residential area, one family into a high-density area, twenty-five story building, which is totally illegal. You cannot do that without a comprehensive plan. You cannot just build a bunch of buildings for people to stay without giving consideration with traffic, with accommodation of supermarkets. There are a bunch of resources, roads. There's a lot of resources that needs to be in place before you think of a higher-density area. But these developers don't really care. They want to put up apartments. And the amenities to accommodate these apartments are not there. Right by, next to my house, where I live right now, we're gonna have eight hundred units. So that's four, five hundred people with more cars using the same little road and 159 I've been using for the longest. This is like a highway here. Imagine we are adding four hundred and fifty more cars or more traveling this road. So, government, people who are making decisions that can affect your life, you must pay attention and select them based on their integrity, knowledge and self-respect.
Okay, incorporation of Biscayne Gardens without massive build-out of flood and prevention and infrastructure is insane. The residents, both owners and renters, will have huge increases in taxes and therefore rental charges. In the end, the winners will be the developers and everyone else will be screwed. How many people get employed in these high-rise properties? And will the few available jobs go to those newcomers while the unemployment in the area increases because we have a population of unskilled labor? It appears to me now that the key to the sane, to a sane development is the commissioner.
Well, I always say this to candidates. If you do not have a profession that you can practice after you elected, don't get into this. Not because you're a community activist, not because you're well-known in the community, you want to run. Because the temptation is coming to you. And once you are elected, the pride of being called honorable or commissioner or mayor Celestine is going to prevent you from going to your nine-to-five job. So if you don't have a profession that in line with the power you about to get into your head and you don't already have an economic situation that would allow you to serve without needing to go to work every day, don't do it. Don't do it. Because most of the individuals I know that got into corruption, that cannot resist the need of the money are people that didn't have any profession, that were not wealthy, that end up being elected and after quit their own jobs. And now making an attempt to live in this three hundred and fifty dollars per month, which is totally impossible. This is a ground for problem. So, personally, I am a licensed professional. I have contracts in the millions that I'm working with companies as their design bill where we provide engineering, architectural and construction. I am state certified. And I have a way of making my living. And my wife and my family, she's also a professional in the medical field. She's making very decent salary for the family. If your situation is not economically under control or stable enough to sustain the lifestyle of a commissioner or mayor, don't get into this. Because you are going to get into trouble. That's all I can tell you. The developers that are giving money, they came to me and they went through special interest. Will always get involved in every election. Because this is part of the business. They want to make sure the candidate or the candidates who are running will support their agenda. In exchange, they will offer financial support. Because they know that they are making a business investment. So they came to me with the idea of we'll give you two hundred thousand, we'll raise you two hundred thousand dollars. But this is what we would like to see. We want to redevelop Biscayne Garden. First, we want to make it a city. And then we want to change the zoning to higher density to build apartment. This is the only area with large lot in the entire Miami Dade County now. And the largest lots in the northeast corridor is only here within that district. We have nowhere to go. This is where we got a target, this is where we got to go. Are you with us? It took a lot of courage from me to say no. I will not take your money under these conditions that you set. Because I don't believe Biscayne Garden should be incorporated now. And I don't believe you should put a bunch of, you should convert the area into a higher-density area because of the flood problem, because our infrastructure needed, because of the sewer problem. And the developers didn't give me any money. The rest of the candidates, they all took the money. Most of them took the money. And now, you, part of the reason all of the candidates are saying they want the steady and the MAC to continue because if it's feasible, they want to do it. Or some of them are for it. Notwithstanding the fact that the area has problem, they still want to continue. And by doing that, they're making the the stability of people in this area uncertain. Because obviously, if the developer put a tower twenty-five story next to your house, one to your right, one to your left, you are going to be forced out of the area. And that's what they're looking to do. And these people need to care about the people they represent and make an effort to stop this. Just like the decision I made. I will not take the developers' money. I want to stop table the ordinance that, that ordered this area to be incorporated that was put in the table and approved by the district commissioner. I want to table that ordinance. By tabling that ordinance, I eliminate the twenty percent rule that gives the power to a group of people that every time they can get twenty percent of the voter's signature within the area, they can put this item on the ballot. A continued nightmare for those of us who lives in this area. Or by having a commissioner that the developer can control and he's capable of waiving that and sending that item directly into the ballot under the title, "The will of the voters." That is wrong. And we need to stop that charade. And that's where I stand.
Okay, so the, the, we've heard that there, that there is a petition out there, we're not exactly sure what it is. Um, that is being, people are being That is being, people are being asked to sign it by. Certain people. I don't even know who or what.
They're only gonna have, they're only wanted to sign by people that live within the zip code of one-six-eight, one-six-two, one-six-one. Which is the area. Which is the proposed area to be incorporated as Biscayne Garden.
So they are actively, as far as you know or not know, are they actively trying to get the twenty percent. Signatures for incorporation to be put back on?
Absolutely, that's already in the making. But that's only the backup. They can do it without that if it's approved by the commission.
So right now, because the bill was, even though it went before an election, we said eighty-three percent of us said, no, we do not want to be incorporated. It's still a live question at the commission level?
That's exactly what I'm trying to make everybody to understand. That did not seal the deal. All they had to do is wait six months.
Oh, that's nasty. That's nasty.
Yeah.
That's nasty.
As long as the ordinance is in existence, they didn't have to wait. They didn't have to do, you didn't seal the deal. Why do you think? The Chamber of Commerce. Under the control of Bernard Jennings, still promoting incorporation? It's because they can do it again. The reason why. They had a meeting set up at the same time, same date, same hour with your meeting. Was to promote incorporation. The reason why. One section of this. One item in this entire election in the District Two is about incorporation. It's because the item didn't die. If that was, if the item had died, there wouldn't be no question about incorporation. Incorporation is very much alive.
Okay, so if they wanted to, let's say, start, the next step that they would take to getting it back on the ballot. Would it require the commission to say, yes, okay, we're gonna let it go back to vote? Because that's what we went through. We went through. The planning thing that was crap, you know, nothing. We couldn't tell people the stories that you've told. You know, they just papered, you know, yeah, 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 okay, go through it. And it gets up to the commission and they basically didn't listen to us either. And just, it was a set deal and boom, boom, boom. But it required the commission to agree to it being put on the ballot. Are we still there with that?
In order for an election to take place. The Miami Dade County Commission. Has to set a resolution to call for an election. The reason an election was, it was needed. Because the last time you had this item before the people. It was an especial election. Meaning that an election was done exclusively for this item. Under the law of this county. The county has to call, has to have a resolution. An ordinance, not a resolution. An ordinance. To set up. An especial election. However. When there is a date. Already set aside. For general election. Or a primary election. It's already called. There is no need to call for another election. All they have to do. Is meet the criteria. And the item will be in the ballot again.
What's the, what is required to fit the?
The twenty percent rule.
It's a twenty?
Twenty percent signature and they don't.
There was never, that was one of the things that we tried to stop them with, is that they'd never done the twenty percent rule.
But now they're doing it.
Okay, so now they're going out and they're trying to get the twenty percent and they'll. They'll go before the commissioner and say, we got the twenty percent. And the next thing we know, we go to November to vote and it's an incorporation thing. That's probably gonna be so convoluted as to what it's saying. You don't know if you're supposed to say yes or no because they did that with us on the ballot.
That's exactly what's going on. That's exactly what's going on. Unless you guys, unless you guys wake up. And go out there and make sure you get the right people into office. That can go and say, hey, look. I'm the new commissioner of District Two. My constituents. Doesn't want incorporation. I want the item table. Until the next commission meeting.
But you really don't, the commissioner is not gonna be probably determined in the primary. I mean, there's a lot of people racing.
If you go before the commission.
Right.
I promise you, I know enough politics to know. Your outgoing commissioner. Will not challenge the incoming commissioner. Let me repeat. Your outgoing commissioner. Who's out on November fourth. Will not challenge your incoming commissioner. Or your presumptuous commissioner. He will not do that.
Okay, but the commissioner might not be elected until the election itself in November.
Yeah, and I'm saying, let's say if. If you're. The winner of your primary. Or your two winners on the primary. Were to go to the commissioner and said, I want that item table, it will be tabled.
Okay, so whoever might be, might be the next one, can ask Monastine to table the thing?
Monastine or go directly to the commission?
Okay, all right, got it, got it, got it. So.
And I promise you, the item will be tabled. And I can tell you right now that if I am the nominee. With Monastine, without it, I'll table the item. Because I know the county commission will not. Will not agree. To take decisions like that when they know there's an upcoming government that will be affected by it.
Okay. Okay. I am so grateful to you because. You make things understandable and you definitely are, you know, have the experience and the knowledge to. Represent us and, you know, based on what you're telling me and what I'm feeling about you, I think that you understand, let's say, the. Temptations, as you put it, the temptations.
And the challenges ahead.
Yeah.
I mean, putting someone in office. Who does not have the proper education, knowledge, and background and the integrity. Is a danger.
Absolutely.
It's a danger. Like, I watch things that are going on, like I said. When I came in North Miami, I was surprised for thirty years. They're using the most valuable piece of property in the city as a dump. Who would have a dump next to the ocean? Right next to FIU North, the entire area is a dump. This is where you wanna go dump your garbage? Doesn't make sense. But. Because this was the only vacant, large parcel the city owned. And you guys think this was the best use for it? I mean, it's unheard of. But. Where there is no vision, the people perish. It's critical that, that you can have a leader that understands the problems, that will perhaps. Somebody else may be more likable or more popular than I am. But it's not about that. It's about someone who's going to represent you, that is knowledgeable enough. To see the problem. The things that I'm talking about. You don't need a PhD to understand them. You just need a leader that can see or enlighten you of what you're facing and why. And have the experience how a government works to tell you what's going on. Because we all know this area has a flood problem. We all know the area is on septic tank. But it's been like that for fifty years or a hundred years. Why other areas are getting. Sewer line and we are not? Why other areas has flood control and we don't have any flood control? And we are taxpayer like everybody else? And we are all under one county government? And why? Can someone tell me, is there currently a plan? That we can tell the people of this area that we're going to begin flood control in a year and six months? Or the area will be on septic tank, will be on sewer and eliminating septic tanks in a year or two years? No. No such plan. And that is a problem. That is a problem.
Well, they did, they did have a plan and they put French drains down the street so that the last time we had a flood. It was because the water was perking up, perking up, it was flowing out of these drains into our yards.
It's called hydraulic surplus. It's called hydraulic surplus because the water had nowhere to go. The water was bouncing against water. That is at three feet. So. The idea is, if you give. A developer. The decision. To do certain things. They are going to do it in their best interest. They're going to put in the system that is most affordable to them. It doesn't have to be the one that works. It would have to be the one that's most affordable to them that they can make you agree to up. Knowledge matters. This area can only resolve the flood problem. By creating detention. Retention. Or class-five wells. All they need is three systems, nothing else would work. And more development, more problems. The bottom line here is that. Vulnerable people are nice enough. To believe these people. And make the wrong decision based on the charade. So that's why it's important that people like you with the knowledge and others need to stand up and voice your opinion. To help each other. Okay, when those false prophets are coming. You know, and bringing in divisive and craziness. Crazy ideas. So we gotta be able to counter them with some good news. And tell the people, no, don't, don't listen to them. They are wrong. They're misleading you into the darkness. Okay? Either elected or not. I sign up to be a part of Biscayne Garden Association. Whether I'm elected or not, you guys are gonna see a lot more of me. Outside of that. I will be there to join voices with you guys. So elected or not, count on me to join voices with you guys.
I was asked to ask you why you were not there when we were fighting the incorporation?
In the incorporation, unfortunately, even though I was against incorporation, in fact, I had sent an email. To the people that were the organizer to that effect. I can send you a copy of that email, telling them that I was with them, but I was. Very sick with COVID. And I couldn't get, I was fighting for my life. So. I couldn't get involved into anything. In fact, COVID was a tremendous. Time in my life. I was very scared and very challenged and I was very, I was sick with COVID. That's why I didn't get involved. That's my answer. Thank you very much for having me. And if it's the will of God. For me to be the leader, I have no doubt I will be.